We'll call the January 23 meeting of the Planning Commission order will begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our home.
I'd like to welcome Mr. Varga back this evening. Mr. Varga has been reappointed to a term of the next four years, so we had the swearing in earlier this evening.
Thank you.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic is absent. Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. You'll notice when Jess called the roll, she left the name off, and the name she left off was Joe Sedoti. Joe Sedoti was an honored member of the Planning Commission, and we're going to miss him greatly. But I'd like to have a moment of silence for Joe, for our compatriot and friend. Thank you. Okay, election of officers.
I'd like to make a proposal for Brian Cook to be vice chair.
Is there an additional nomination? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. We'll vote on Brian. Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay. We need also the chairman, so I entertain a motion.
Make a motion for Bill Snow.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the nominations, and we'll vote.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. And now for secretary. I'll make a nomination. Mr. Varga.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We had to sit on their lap. So, entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the December 9 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have five public hearings this evening, but actually, we only have four because number one is going to be tabled because it was advertised with the wrong address in it. When the applicant filled out the paperwork, he filled it out with the wrong address. So, that will be tabled this evening. So, entertain a motion to table item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Second is conditional use permit to allow medical offices of similar use at 8819 Tyler Boulevard. Is that applicant here? Would you come forward, please, and identify yourself for the clerk? The format we follow for the public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they'd like to do in a location. Then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity. Then those wishing to speak against are given an opportunity, or you may just have questions. So, go right ahead, and identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Good evening. My name is Bluann Sowers, and I'm with the Bella Women's Center.
Okay, and give us a little overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
Sure. We would like to open up a center there that is non-surgical and offers limited medical services to pregnant women.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Nothing other than what's noted in the report.
Okay. Can you give us a little history of yourself?
Sure. I have been on the board and a volunteer, and then executive director at Birthright in Lake County and Yoga County. Been there for 17 years, and just recently hired by the Bella Women's Center last, I believe it was August, to open up, to be the development director here for the Lake County Center.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or the administration?
Couple of questions, Chair. More about the services you provide when you say clinical services.
Sure.
What exactly do you provide onsite?
We're going to be doing ultrasounds and limited STD testing treatment. So, there's no surgical procedures that we'll be providing. The STD treatment that we'll be providing, if the testing for that, it's a urine test, and if they need treatment, it'll be a pill that they would be taking, and that would be under the direction of our medical director.
Is that medical director onsite, or is...
No, he oversees, but we do have RNs that are onsite and on staff, and they will be the ones that administer the medication.
And then, just on the ultrasound, are they certified techs?
Yes, so we will have, like I said, we will have licensed RNs onsite and on staff, and also licensed RDMs, which is the stenographer that will be providing the ultrasound.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, you read the staff report?
Yes.
Any comments with regard to what's presented in there? How about the conditions that are listed?
Nope, we're in agreement with all of them.
Okay, good.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
I have a question. I just found it a little unusual that you located this in a semi-industrial zone rather than, say, an office building or something closer to a medical facility. Is there any, what's the reason behind that other than...
We looked at many facilities in Mener and a couple of other locations, and honestly, it was just, we found the space that was available. We went there, we visited with some of our current staff, and felt that the location there would fit the needs, that it would be, it's kind of nondescript from the outside, that it would be welcoming and private enough for her to come in and feel safe there.
Okay. And do you write, do the staff write other prescriptions, or is it very limited in terms of...
It's very limited. It would just be the treatment, excuse me, for the STD, and again, that would be the RN that would give her the prescription, and that would be under the medical director's guidance.
So, there's no other prescriptions that are written for other things?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. One quick question. On your letter that you submitted, you have something that says here, "Do you do frequent vision tours?", and I'm just curious what that is.
Sure, that would just be sharing what we do with the community, our supporters.
Was that onsite, or, I mean...
We've, we do them both. We do, we might have a few people come in and do a tour of the building to see exactly what we do, to catch the vision, but many of them have been offsite as well. We've done in-home ones, we've, we'll hold banquets and stuff.
Okay.
I have another question.
Right ahead.
Just another quick question, just more for information, anything else. So, you accept anybody walking off the street?
Anybody, yes, and the services are all free of charge.
All free of charge. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion for approval with the five conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cook.
Jess, when you're ready.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. You're good.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow the purchase of automobiles as a similar use at 7471 Tyler. Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is Bonnie Sandler, Director of Real Estate for Car Group Holdings, LLC, doing business as webuyanycar.com.
Okay. Are you going to talk, sir? If you're going to talk, okay. Give us a little overview of what you'd like to do at that location, please.
Okay, so the nature of our business is we give consumers an alternative way to sell their car as opposed to trading it in or a private sale. We have a website called webuyanycar.com. Currently, we're in 10 states, I believe around 94 locations. What consumers do is they go onto our website, they put in their information, they're given a price based upon the information that they put into the, it's like a wizard. Anyway, if they would like to sell their car, they make an appointment to come to the location closest to them, and then that's where the paperwork's completed, and they leave with their check, and the car is stored inside until it's picked up and taken to a Dessa or Manheim, their auto auctions, where it's resold to dealers at auction.
Okay.
So, there's no sales at the location, like no retail sales. It's strictly an administrative office where we see people by appointment and temporary storage.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman, other than what's been noted in the conditions.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go right ahead.
How many cars can you store inside?
Oh, my God, that location is pretty big. I'm trying to think of how many would hold, but how many realistically at our other locations? Because we change our pricing every 72 hours by how dealers are buying in your market, so cars don't sit very long. So, and we always know how many appointments we have in a given day. So, I'd say, like, in a market like as dense as, like, right outside of New York City, we could buy eight cars on a Saturday, and it's picked up on Monday. So, I'd say, like, in our densest market, we could buy eight cars, so.
So, do you, sorry. Do you have other locations in Ohio?
Right now, I have a location in Brook Park. Strongsville is in the process of being opened. Stowe, Alaria, Akron, Canton. I have five active locations right now, and we just started on our mass media about two weeks ago on cable television.
So, the reason I asked about the number of cars is that there's no allowance here to store any cars.
Everything's inside.
Outside.
Correct.
So, that becomes an administrative management thing, that you don't take in more cars than you can store.
We're not allowed to by our lease to have any cars outside overnight regardless, so. Not even an employee vehicle, so.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I entertain a motion. Mr. Zeeman, any comments from the legal department?
No, no, this is a specific question, Chairman.
Motion to approve with the six conditions.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
No.
Say no?
That's what I said.
Oh. Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow vehicle servicing as a similar use at 6064 Pine Cone. Is that applicant here?
No.
If you'd identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Evening. My name is David Hayward with PWP.
And what is PWP? Give us a little overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
So, the name's Protection with Perfection. We do clear bra film, it's called. It's a clear wrap that goes on cars to prevent rock chips, scratches, and other damage. We also do window film, tint on cars, and we do some basic cleaning and detailing on the cars because they have to be cleaned for the processes for putting the film on without having dirt. It's like basically putting a screen protector on a phone to keep it from getting damaged. We do it on a much larger scale on a car.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
I have a question. Do you put film on windows that exceed the legal limit in the state?
Not if they're for, on the regular public roads. We can for off-road only or track vehicles that don't see, that aren't licensed on the road.
So, that's a company policy?
Yes.
You won't put film on windows that exceed the state requirement?
Yeah, we only do, and then the Ohio, in Ohio, it's 50% on the front sides, nothing on the front windshield, and then...
So, you adhere to the Ohio law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion for approval with the eight conditions.
Second.
You read the staff report?
Yes.
You have any problem with those eight conditions? Okay, good. Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. They're all set. Conditional use permit to allow car washes of similar use at 7550 Palisades Parkway, or 7350 Palisades Parkway. Is that applicant here? Okay, give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
Sure. Matt Guile with Rainforest Car Wash, so we're looking to replace the building that's currently there, put a 180-foot tunnel car wash in. It's a express wash, so they're really, we put through 120 cars an hour. It's a quick process, usually a couple of people per shift, and we'll offer free vacuums for the public customers as well.
Okay. So, this is, we're dealing here with the CUP for the car wash.
Correct.
Right. We'll get into the building materials and stuff at a later juncture.
Primary plan, yeah.
All right. So, what we're dealing here now is with just the conditional use permit for the car wash. Any comments from the audience? Any concerns? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration? Kathy?
No, we've noted some specific items in the, in the conditions, just we want to make sure that the applicant is aware of some of the restrictions, but other than that...
So, you've read the staff report, and you're familiar with the conditions under the CUP?
Correct.
So, Mr. Zeeman, question for the legal department. If we approve the CUP and we have concerns about the site plan, one's not necessarily, if we approve the CUP, it doesn't give approval for the site plan, correct?
Correct. Different criteria, of course, different regulations would apply. The CUP would just indicate that this particular use would be appropriate with whatever conditions, you know, the commission may apply at that location, and that's not to suggest, of course, that the site would lay out properly in terms of traffic flow, in terms of architectural review, in terms of, you know, any variety of characteristics that affect how it would function and how it would interrelate with adjacent properties.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the administration or the applicant?
I have a question, or some questions. The, I was just out there, and I drove and looked at the location, and then I also looked at your documents, and it's identified that your entrance area is actually not off a right-of-way, but off of a access easement, which is really, it appears like it's the parking lot for, for the other tenant that's there, that's to the south. It just seemed very ill-defined at that point. It looked like the whole area was just nothing but the parking lot. It had been repaved. You could see the whole thing had been repaved, not as a right-of-way and not as a street, but just as a parking lot. And so, my question is also to the city. It's, that's kind of a strange situation, because the right-of-way is not defined as a street, as a right-of-way. There's no curb, there's no, no striping, there's no definition of it as being a right-of-way, and the parking lot just spills into this area with no islands or, you know, termination islands on the row of existing parking. So, it just seems like you're driving into somebody's parking lot, and then you're going into your business without a lot of definition, and, and that just seems a little, it's just not defined very well, at least, and I'm looking at the plan, and the plan really doesn't tell me much more because that's just part of the parking lot where, where you're entering your property. I, that didn't seem to be appropriate, at least at first to me, so does the city have a point of view or a statement about this? Because to me, that's kind of ill-defined.
Well, it is, it is not a right-of-way. It's defined as a, as an access easement. Now, the building was used at one point, it's been out, it's been out of use for a couple of years, so that was its primary access point as well. So, it's a matter of defining it further certainly could be. That was one of the points that we have noted in the, under the preliminary site plan, that we wanted some, I guess, some clarification as to their rights to use that entry point from that access drive, and maybe that could be, that could be more clarified at the time of final review.
On the first page of this, the document that was presented to us, it looks like the Palisade Parkway right-of-way goes, makes a 90-degree turn, goes south, and then hits the property line and stops.
And that's what we were asking about as well.
But when you're in the field, when you're actually there, that's not defined as a right-of-way. That's just part of the parking lot. There's no, there's no striping, there's no curb, there's no edge condition.
It's a private drive.
Well, at what point does it become a private drive? Is all of Palisades Parkway a private drive?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. When I was saying right-of-way, I was thinking it was a city right-of-way. So, it's all a private drive, so, okay, my concerns are minimized on that point. But I'd still, it would still seem to be wise to define that whole entrance a lot better because you're just driving into somebody's parking lot, and then you're turning into this facility.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. This is for the CUP.
So, I'll make a motion for approval of the CUP with the three conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
You got the CUP.
All right, thank you.
We'll talk about the site plan when we get to that point on the agenda.
No, they, they're building.
Business architectural review, arranging of a commercial building at 7215 Center Street. Is that applicant here? I don't think he's here. So, if that's the case, it's on the table, will stay on the table. Conditional use permit to allow an automobile repair shop at 8330 Station Street. Is that applicant here? Table, that stays on the table.
Yeah, that was requested to be tabled.
Okay.
Since we're back to...
Rezoning of 73 and a half acres from R4, single-family to RVG. Is that applicant here? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to take it off the table.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Jim O'Connor with Pulte Homes. I believe I've told you before about Pulte Homes and who we are, and given us a lot of introduction about our company and our history and Mener. Thank you for this opportunity today to walk through updates and changes that we've made to the, to the plan based on feedback that we got from the last meeting and the continuing evolution of that. So in the previous meeting, we were here, there was a 73-acre parcel. We were only taking ownership to 50 acres of the parcel and then that left 23 acres open. And it placed a constraint on the development. Not only that, but it was a limitation that created significant hardships in terms of access and being able to get to two dedicated accesses. And also, it left a big, huge question out there as to what was going to happen with those 23 acres? And what could happen? And what adverse use could come in there and have an impact on everything? And I think there was a lot of anxiety about that that was expressed through public comments. So I'm happy to report today that we're here to be able to talk in the entirety of the 73-acre parcel. We were able to acquire the additional 23 acres and be able to include it in the development proposal. So I think that that is a tremendous benefit that we've been able to bring forward. I talked at length about the overall area and context and how this parcel fit in in between existing high-density residential R10 and existing RVG and then destination retail across the street. And then, next slide. And then when you look at it, as I presented last time, there was still that 23-acre void that would remain R4. And now today, as we stand and go forward, it's the entire 73-acre parcel. So it makes complete sense that it's contiguous to the destination retail above the existing R10 to the east and then the existing RVG to the west. So it fits in perfect and creates, I mean, the real purpose of it is to create the transition and to create a transition zone and a proper transition zone between the different zoning classifications. And I think the director may speak about that a little bit more later as to the, to the use of this being an excellent use of the RVG code to satisfy this parcel. We did additional analysis when we were here at the last meeting. We were asked to also consider R1 and R2 and what the impacts would be. And for the old site at 50 acres, you could see that we would be yielding greater units. Between R1 and R2 could yield up to 150 units with zero open space requirements. So it was just a demonstration to show that we are looking at all the options. And then this is, as it's submitted now, we, obviously, we increased our size to 73 acres. So with that, brought an increase in units. We, under the RVG code, we could have 182 units. We are currently at 174 units in this plan before you. The 23 acres added 60 units to the site. When you look at the spectrum of all the available codes and approaches to this, we feel that this is the best solution. And there is another planned unit development code that could yield up to four units an acre, which would be 292 units. And so we feel that this is really a good compromise and the best, most practical application of the RVG code for this particular site. Before, the previous plan, you could see we went through a process of five meetings here and got very constructive feedback. We talked about the curvilinear design on the roads and different changes and improvements we made to the site plan as it evolved through feedback that we got from you. But the predominant issue that was before us was the issue of connection, either to the south or to the west, to Steeplechase, or to the east, to Deepwoods, and how we would handle that. And that was a significant issue, significant constraint in our last meeting. And we got a lot of feedback to that effect. Go ahead. There we go. So... So this is, this is our revised plan. So 174 lots. The average lot size is 58 feet wide by 135 feet deep. The principal change, as everybody talked about in the last meeting, was the ability to have two entrances onto Johnny Cake Road, two dedicated right-of-way entrances onto Johnny Cake Road. We eliminated the connection to the west at Steeplechase. And then we had, in this instance right here, we had a constricted access to Deepwoods, to the connection at Deepwoods, the existing connection and cul-de-sac that comes into the property now. So we think that the original 114 layout has changed very little other than the elimination of that stub street. And then it's really just the new 23 acres of design that has been added in the housing in that section right there. So I'll walk through, I mean, this started, we've almost been a year in the planning process with this and we've brought in multiple iterations. The biggest changes that have occurred really are the increase in acreage from 50 acres to 73 acres, which brought the increase in units from 114 to 174. But it was, most importantly, it was about the handling of the entrances. And this change that's before you today with the two entrances onto Johnny Cake and solving that problem. And that has eliminated a dedicated entrance at Deepwood and a dedicated entrance at Steeplechase as requested. So this is the plan. It might be a little bit tough to see, easier to look at on the 11-by-17s like that for you. So again, we continue to focus on quality, quality open space, quality neighborhood space, spaces and preservation of natural features is very important. And then actually, the space, through our feedback and interaction here, have created the Central Commons and Central Greens that remain intact and have not changed. One of the important things in the planning process we limit, we look at, the intent of the code, really, you want to honor as a constraint very sensitive environmental areas. And so Ward Brook is obviously a very sensitive environmental area. We've established a conservation protection zone along that. And this is all part and parcel of the storm water improvements and everything else. So really, what we want to do is limit our crossings of Ward Brook. And in this instance, you see it's done with one crossing, which has always been proposed as one crossing, and that remains. And that really, it, the least amount of possible impact. We're impacting it at the most narrow place. And the best place for that to occur is right where it is right now. And then if we were to consider any other areas, it would be, it would have additional environmental impacts such as wetland impacts and everything like that. So that is why through our study, we found what we feel is the optimum place to make a crossing and to limit our crossings of that sensitive environment area to one crossing. So... So one of the requests in the staff report or conditions in the staff report, and this is just a slight modification, was they requested for Phase 1, which is you see in the yellow, which would be the completion of both entrances concurrently. So that yellow would be constructed as Phase 1 and then Phase 2 would continue on and then Phase 3 and 4 respectively. So you get the two entrances immediately with Phase 1. And that was adjusted per the staff report. The next biggest issue, so the plan before you shows the cul-de-sac, which is on my left or your right. And what that was designed to do, the initial design, was to significantly limit or significantly constrict access to Deepwoods. It was designed, the Center Island, to obstruct your view, to not make it look like a thoroughfare, to do everything possible to restrict traffic to go through there. After receiving the staff report and responding to the comments in the staff report, we're able to come up with the solution that we propose on my right, your left, which would be a closed-end cul-de-sac at the end of the street, at Deepwoods Boulevard, right there. So we would close off the cul-de-sac. We would stop the road short. And then we would create an emergency access drive only that would consist of grass pavers and provide access for emergency vehicles to the street. And so that would not be open to public, public traffic. There'd be a monoball curb and go up and over. And so strictly limited to emergency vehicles. So we believe that's probably one of the most significant, significant improvements to the plan to satisfy the Deepwood neighborhood.
I'm going to make one comment. There are five commissioners here this evening. For it to go on to council with an affirmative would take three of the five. Now, if we have three of the five, Mr. Zeeman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I'll cite the American Code of Orders, the Section 117.09. And looking at zoning changes, this section of the code becomes operative. So the planning commission makes recommendation to the city council. And in the city council, the number of votes required to adopt a zoning change depends on the nature of the recommendation that comes from this body. If the recommendation is negative, six votes of council of the seven members are required to basically prove something over that negative recommendation. Now, there's a little bit of a nuance because if the, if there's a positive recommendation, but the positive recommendation is with less than four votes. So in tonight's example, let's just say hypothetically, there were three votes in favor, two against the rezoning. It would go to the city council with a positive recommendation of less than four affirmative votes. That would require the affirmative vote of five members of council in order to enact the zoning change, if those five members, of course, found favor with it. Otherwise, if it were a four-to-three or, you know, four-to-two, however many, then a simple majority of council vote would be required. So that's just a procedural issue that I think the applicant should be advised of so that the applicant can make an informed decision. If the commission is interested in making recommendation tonight, obviously, with only five members, that may affect the applicant's, you know, position relative to whether it wants action tonight from the commission or whether to table it and see whether or not there's six or a seventh member at the next meeting in three weeks.
We'll leave that up to you. Do you want to go forward with it this evening? Or do you want to wait and go forward with it three weeks from now?
I would still desire to continue forward. And then if there are more unanswered questions that do come up, then at that point, we would make a decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Any comments from the administration?
I just would like to clarify a little bit because of the significant change that's been presented tonight and in lieu of what the staff has recommended. The particular connection that you see, or that you see between the proposed development and Deepwood, the administration talked about that at length. And just so everyone understands, we will not allow a public roadway connection to a private connection. And so because of that existing 100-foot private easement that exists on Deepwood's property, the Polte development, if it goes forward as a public right-of-way, it cannot move forward and connect. Now, that being said, Polte could do entirely private roads and connect that way. But he doesn't, they don't desire to do that. Public roads are usually more preferred for many obvious reasons and he would like to move forward as a public roadway. And if, and if the Deepwood condominiums have no desire to dedicate that easement portion as a public roadway, that would make a complete public-to-public connection, then that is why we're suggesting and conditioning that that semi-cul-de-sac would actually be a full cul-de-sac. And as Mr. O'Connor explained, and then this is a bit unusual and, I guess, in the terms of the position of the city, but because of the new, an additional access point that's been added at 84, the city feels that it's important to still have an emergency access at the point of Deepwood. And it's a benefit to both sides. It's a benefit to the new development. It's a benefit to the Deepwood residents as well. So for example, you know, worst-case scenario, and this is what we have to consider as an administration, fire safety, obviously, public, police safety. If there were to be some sort of accident or anything that would block the overpass over the Ward Brook stream, there would be no way of getting in, emergency services of getting in. So they would need to utilize that emergency access point over at the cul-de-sac. But again, it would be limited to an emergency access. And we would work out and finalize the permanent design of that so that it's clear to everyone that it's only for emergency purposes. There's different ways that that can be done. That's something that we conditioned as part of the, as part of the staff report. But, so it would be a permanent cul-de-sac. It wouldn't be for, through traffic. It would only be for emergency services only. So that is a significant change. But the administration, just for everyone's interest, we are in support of that because of the uniqueness of this development and what it provides.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. And that's what we drew on under-left or right there. That was our, our solution to that. That provides an emergency accessway and it is a closed cul-de-sac that is not open to through traffic.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
I can also reiterate some of the storm, storm water improvements that I did last time. And so I think one of the other principal benefits of this 23 acres is when you, when you look at, when the 23 acres was open, there was still no way to stop the flow of water, which would flow to the south and go towards Ward Brook. And wasn't able to direct water to the city's improvements and infrastructure along Johnny Cake Road. Now, with the, next slide, in the plan, all of the, all of that area is taken to the north and taken into the city's system, which they've designed to accommodate that. The city put in tremendous infrastructure. And now this gets all the water up to the north where it's intended to be and out of Ward Brook. So it decreases the amount of surface area going to Ward Brook. So that's a significant improvement, as is picking up the water coming off the, coming off the highway that was flowing into the neighborhood, to the west as well. So very, very significant storm improvements and the ability to capitalize on the infrastructure that the city has put in. And actually enhance it as well. The open space, again, the key driver, this design is at 35%, so well above the requirement and actually the suggestions. And 50% of that open space is concentrated in one usable area and designed to be highly, highly useful and highly engaging. Next element, there were three basic zones. We shifted the front entrance. The front entrance was initially going to be the entrance to the west. Now it is the entrance to the east. The biggest benefit of that is that is a signalized intersection. And so that will be the main entrance into the community. And then there's the B-zone and the C-zone. I'll break up each of those on the next slide. So the Central Commons space, this remains exactly as presented last time and unchanged. So exactly as before, a central pavilion and a water fountain, park benches, bike rack, the ability to, a parking lot, the ability to get people there, a third of a mile walking path around the park and a community garden. So a place for people to come together and engage with each other. Next slide. So again, the entryway, very stately and pronounced entry, signalized, biggest benefit is the signalized intersection for the ability to control traffic. And then we had the conservation protection zone and there were two requested for benches and seating overlooks in that area. Those were added the last time and remain there. And again, a third of a mile path in this area as well. So two separate walking path areas, two different experiences and the ability to come to the end, sit on the bench and then go back. The western, the perimeter buffering, landscaping, to be able to preserve neighbors to the south. We went through this in detail in the last meeting. Be heavily landscaped. We did the product as well and the houses and presented the houses and the proposed architecture for the houses at the last meeting. This remains all unchanged. This is a repeat of the, of the previous presentation. Roof overhangs are the next important item. Every house has eaves and overhangs on every, every plan. And then most importantly, I talked last week about the variety in the streetscape and doing different elements to soften the streetscape where in some houses, the garage is forward and other houses, it's a porch element that's forward and the use of different transitional elements to create that variety along the streetscape. And then I believe, most importantly, we listened to the feedback from the last meeting and we've come up with two very, very practical solutions to that. and we've come up with two very, very practical solutions to that. Obviously, the steeplechase connection has been eliminated and taken out, and the revised Deepwood connection, we've closed the cul-de-sac with emergency access only through the staff report. And that's, this is our, this is our overall plans. Hopefully, hopefully, what we're demonstrating is our responsiveness, our responsiveness to the feedback, to the engagement, and coming back each time with enhancements to the plan that address issues that have been brought up. You'll see that in our company, how we've responded with, with each step of the way. We've heard from the adjacent communities, we've tried to respond directly to them. It's a very, very practical approach to RVG and the proper application of zoning. Looked at multiple different options for the site and feel that this is the best, best use of the RVG code is best for this site. We're helping to solve very problematic drainage concerns for the city and helping to put the infrastructure that is in place into practice and get the water into there and solve other downstream issues by controlling it. So, this really puts that into place. And then, through the, through the variety of the housing that we offer and the variety of the product, we're able to attract new buyers to the market, and those buyers will have a catalytic effect on the, on the neighboring retail to the north and an overall positive impact to the area. Hopefully, you'll see, we've tried to address everything possible, and I think we've had some modification or tweak based on every comment we've received along the way.
Thanks. So, the chair certainly realizes this evening that this is a major impact to the surrounding areas. So, while it's not a public hearing this evening, I'm going to allow public comment. So, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
My name is Jim Saracy. I'm with Deepwood Board of Directors, and so, we do not plan to dedicate that road as a public road that easement. So, the revised plan with the closed cul-de-sac with emergency access only looks very good to us, and in principle, we agree with it as long as it remains as such.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Boris Zansky. 8931 Perkins Drive, Mentor. I moved here in 1971. It's like 49 years ago. And it's 8,000 Garfield Road, which is now where Stony Brook is, okay? And in the paper, I keep reading about this water problem at Stony Brook, and that's one of the reasons you're diverting, we want to divert out to the, to the street. I spent the first 13 years in that area and had flooding virtually every year, all the time. The, in 1985, built the property, and the planning commission had us put in two retention basins, one on each side of Stony Brook Lane. That didn't work too well. The problem was that the outlet underneath Garfield Road was too small. Consequently, the water continued to back up for another, I don't know how many years it was, but after that, well, first of all, all this water starts over at Lake Lake Community College. And every time that they put up a building, or they put up more parking lot, it causes more water flow down through that, that section there. The, in this timeframe, there were two developments put in south of Stony Brook, and neither one of them have any retention basin, but both of them dumped their water into this creek that goes down through Stony Brook there, which, you know, doesn't, doesn't help out very well. With the development of the Norton Estate, the underpass or the culvert under Garfield Road was enlarged. So, what happened then was all the water could run straight through without any, because before that, it was going, filling up the retention basins that we had to install, and then going down and trying to get out, it couldn't get through Garfield Road, so the water would flow over top of Stony Brook. With that new change there that eliminated that particular problem, in 1977, the city of Mentor traded some land with the Board of Education. The result of the trade was that the city acquired 3.4-acre triangular parcel of land at the south end of Ridge Elementary School. And the purpose of them obtaining that property was to put in a retention basin, a retention pond, to handle that whole area there. That never developed, the retention pond never did get in. The city ended up also, they put, they put another, under Stony Brook, they enlarged the passages for the water to go through. They went from the squash aluminum pipe to rectangular, two rectangular things to get more water through that area. I feel the, well, when I wrote this, I said, I feel that the city's kind of kicking the can down the road for not placing the burden of the drainage, you know, where it really We have a solution to the problem, which is the retention basin property that's behind the school, and it's 3.4 acres. In my research today, in trying to find the deed that transferred the property, I was out at the courthouse and was able to get a copy of the deed, but when I first went in, I found that the deed was wrong. So, with the help of the people at the county, we reviewed everything, and it determined that anybody that tried to find this particular parcel of land wasn't going to find it based on the, on the deed and the property because the deed was incorrect. At the time the city transferred the property to their name out of the Board of Education, the, who was it, Hackenberg, wrote up the two deeds on the same day, and on the deed for the property behind Ridge School, they put in all the dimensions and locations and everything for the Hopkins School. So, it was very difficult to locate this information. I've got a map here. I'm going to give you a copy of everything I have. This shows the triangular-shaped property that's behind Ridge, and you can see where the water runs right along there, goes into Stony Brook. By putting retention basin in, you're going to stop all the flooding downstream, okay? Does it help them? I don't know. You know, if they can put it there, they can get rid of their water too, and you're not going to overload the Route 84 storm drains. The, I have the two deeds. I have a copy of the correct deed that identifies the parcel that was taken off of the school. And I got a copy of the incorrect deed, which shows a similar triangle, but bigger. It's four point some acres, but it's on Hopkins Road. But the same, supposed to be the same place. And, you know, finally, I came to the conclusion, I've been kind of blaming the city for years for not putting that retention basin in there, when it, after finding this, it finally dawned on me that there was no way that the city could find it unless they've been around here long enough to have an understanding of what happened in 1977. So, I would strongly recommend that this retention basin be put in and solve all your drainage problems going in that direction because you're going, now you're going across the Norton Estate property, you're adding more water down to the Garfield Park. That got washed out down there in that park because there was too much water, and you had to go in and rebuild the wall and do all that, that kind of stuff to it. Had this retention basin been in there, you wouldn't have had that kind of water running down there. So, that's, I want to, I have tried before, I've talked on numerous occasions to council and planning about the various things that, you know, the reasons that this should be put in, and it seemed like nothing ever happened with it. I really think that planning ought to review the information. I've got a copy of the two drawings, the one with the triangular-shaped parcel. I have the whole Stony Brook thing, and I've got a copy of the two deeds, the good one. I marked one good and one bad. And I've got a copy of that to leave with the planning people here.
Can you give it to Larry? Larry, will you accept that from him?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's basically everything I have here. But it's, like I said, it's just, you know, I realize at this point that planning or the city didn't have much hope of finding that. I knew it was there, I got the county guy out there, and he knows the ground, and the only way he found it was that the deed for the Hopkins Roads property retention basin was filed at the same day as the one for the Ridge School, and they were consecutive. So, he looked back and, one page in the book, and happened onto it. It was very helpful, indicated that he's going to have the deed, the correct deed corrected, or the, the old deed corrected so that it is the right information. Anybody have any questions?
I think you answered most everything.
Thank you much.
And then some. So, anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Yes, I would like to. My name is Mark Horton. I'm with CT Consultants, and I'm here on behalf of Lakeland Community College. And I just wanted to compliment the gentleman on his research, but I need to dispel one thing that he said. In regard to the storm drainage at Lakeland, it has no, no impact on anything north of I-90. We've, over the past two years, been engaged by Lakeland to do a stormwater management modeling analysis, among other projects we're working on. And over half of the stormwater from that camp, that campus goes down to the south into the Sugarin River. There's a portion of it that comes over at the, the outfall underneath I-90, and in the summer of 2018, there was a flood in Hunter's Woods. We went down and investigated, took photographs. It was blocked up. It was ODOT's responsibility to clear it. They did, and there has been no problem since then.
Okay.
And as an aside, I'm sorry I'm late. I was stuck in a traffic jam on the shoreway.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. I'm sorry. Got to be a little quicker out of your chair.
I don't really have a comment against. I have some questions.
Sure.
I own the parcel that's pie-shaped to the west property line. I need four there. With the rezoning of this to the RVG, it doesn't really give me what the required rear-yard setbacks will be. And it doesn't give me a condition when the RVG abuts to R4, if that would be increased. Now, the size of lots look about the same throughout the whole development, but I'm assuming that it's going to be, have a very small rear yard. So, I guess I have a request that if it's rezoned to the RVG, that you require a 50-year, 50-foot buffer along the R4 existing zoning?
Keith, any comments? Larry, any comments?
I've owned that property since 1993, and before that was my wife's grandmother's property. We've enjoyed that, that nice yard next to us, and we always knew that it could be developed, so I don't have a problem with it being developed. But I'm going from a very nice area to a house-on-house with very little separation between each structure and very, my whole, my whole, three, three-thirds of the size of my house are going to be exposed to either traffic or to somebody's rear yard. So, I would hope that you would make a requirement that against the existing R4, that you're going to require a bigger buffer than what's proposed today.
Okay. We'll, we'll deal with that. Anything else?
That's all. The only other question I had back 30 years ago, they widened 84, and they bought the right-of-way from, they bought enough that they widened it from a three to a four lane, possibly a fifth. With this additional 182 units, I think you said, I think you're proposing 170 something?
174.
Is there a requirement, or is there a traffic study being done with the impacts will be on 84? Do we know that?
There, there was an initial trip generation report done, which the engineering department has commented on, and also, they've indicated that it'll be, there'll be further follow-up with that, which they've indicated in the staff report. I don't want to speak in too much detail about it from an engineering standpoint, but they will be evaluating the impacts of, on, certainly on 84, and meeting the, the code requirements, so.
This gentleman here.
I am Kiriya Shiba. My wife and I live in the Forest Lane Estates, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for opening it up so we can have a few words as well. Along with the gentleman that just spoke, that's our concern as well, and I just wanted to echo that, that we feel that while the developer, you know, he's addressed a lot of different issues with the surrounding communities, I haven't heard a whole lot of change on the western side of providing a larger buffer there. Again, you know, we, we like it there, we realize, you know, they're going to build all these houses, and anything that can be done to, you know, cut down, you know, the sites, the noise and things like that, you know, berm walls, whatever it takes, or just additional, you know, additional, just additional space to increase that size, we would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Renee Sliwak, thank you for opening it up. So, I live on the west side, and I have more of a question as opposed to an opposition of it, going to the buffering and everything like that. How do we have a guarantee, you know, of what's going to happen? Because they can say, oh, we're going to put a buffer in, but what happens if, oh, we ran over budget and we don't have time for those trees? You know what I'm saying? Sorry. Just, I guess, a question of where does that all come into play?
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, so, when we condition anything at this level and also at the council level, it's our responsibility to make sure that all of those conditions are met. So, if they're not met, then they will have to come back and make sure that they adhere to the requirements. So, it's not a matter of them just giving in. So, it's not a matter of them just giving an empty promise. It's, we will, as, as our part of our due diligence, make sure that the conditions that are outlined and any of the code requirements are met.
With those requirements, I mean, what are the requirements? Because it's like, we see there, but it's like, is that 30 feet? Is that 50 feet? You know, that kind of stuff.
So, an answer, I guess, in general answer to the, to some of these questions, there are no specific buffer requirements residential to residential. If you want to make any kind of specific condition, that can be made. I know Mr. O'Connor had addressed some of the concerns on the west side, and there's going to be, well, there is an existing easement there for drainage. So, he has to work around that as well. But, so there are some factors at play. But there are clearly, you know, property line boundaries there that would need to be adhered to. But again, Mr. O'Connor can also speak to the buffer that he was intending for that area. But in the short answer is, is there no specific code requirement residential to residential.
And that's my concern, is that they're...
Why don't we let Mr. O'Connor address that?
Yes, but if you could, I had a zoomed-in image on the western end. So, but, um...
No, keep going.
Right, right there. Okay. So, to the point, so when we speak in terms of, when we do our initial design, we do what's called basically an all-fit. So, the box to the right that you see, for example, in 109, that fits our largest home. And so, we, and as I touched a little bit about on the products that we offer, we have eight different floor plans. And in specific instances, and for specific owners, I've, we met in advance and talked about this, and I said, what we do and we commit to in certain areas where we will modify the landscaping plan, and this will become part of the city documents, they will be the final landscaping plans, where we will install fencing as screening in key areas based on feedback that we get from that particular property owner. And then, in certain instances, we're able to actually increase the setback in the area to 35 feet off of the rear yard with a 30-foot separation. And so, you have a significant distance in that key view corridor, that key area for that house, providing additional buffer. And then you can see, as the lots tail off to the right, there was, with sublot 110 and 111, the space gets greater. So, we're trying to create alignment, and in that spot, there are two things that will happen. It will be about the scale of houses, so whether it's a one-story house or two-story house, so we're able to offer on this particular lot, you can only have the ranch plan, so that will be a lower scale, so it won't be as, as big of a visual impact. And then also, enhanced landscaping and additional rear yard setback. And we're able to do that in select key areas, and we'll do that in advance with the final landscaping plans. And I'm happy to meet, and they'll have input and involvement of it. We've already met in advance and talked about this idea and this concept. And I think her question reiterates the concern, how well I know it's not an empty promise, and say, well, it will become an element that's in the approved plans.
So, we'll see the landscape plan that you end up working with these individuals on. Okay.
That, we can certainly make the, again, a condition, there's always, that's always a condition, a full landscape plan is required, which is one of the current conditions of the staff report. You can also add additional conditions stipulating it, you know, those single-story homes in certain areas on the plat, that has to be written on the plat, you can do it that way. You can also, again, those setback require, those setbacks are established there, as he's noted, as the buffer decreases, the rear setback increases, those are stipulated on the approved plan, which would then, we would have to make sure to adhere to at the time of building permit review.
So, hopefully, that, that addresses the comment, but there are key, very sensitive areas that we'll take additional planning efforts in, in solving that issue.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I have some comments or questions, maybe a suggestion. I've been dragged along with, you know, solely getting on board with this project. You've done a lot of work and responsiveness to previous comments, and I think that's to your credit. Isn't quite what I had imagined, but yet I can start to understand. One of the things I was, had some interest in is whether there'd be a second bridge crossing someplace here. And I think it's been addressed that that becomes more of an ecological problem and a drainage problem. I do have one observation, and that is that it, I appreciate the, the common space and all the details and all the interest, and especially, you know, around these areas here. With the addition of the forward, or the new housing layout in the front, I'd like to see, and I'm not talking about a major change here, I'm just talking about a detail, but I'd like to see some kind of easement around here somewhere that would get a pedestrian easement into this environment, and maybe be able to cross this and start to be able to access all this. Because right now, all of this area, the all-new area that's been added, including the area that was here before, the only way they can, as a pedestrian, get from here to any of the, any of this recreational space is to cross the bridge right here. And I'd like to see another pedestrian crossing someplace here so that, you know, a person down here has, has any chance of being able to get over here as a pedestrian. So, they can share in those amenities that, that are part of the definition of the RVG. So, I would make as a condition, with the support of my other commissioners, that you find a way to get a easement between some of the houses here, and to be able to get access easily to this area, you know, this, this walkway area here, just to be able to get there as a pedestrian, so that they don't have to come all the way down over here and go, you know, that's, that's too laborious. And it takes away the advantage of RVG, the, the common and recreational space, the distance takes that amenity away from them. So, I'd like to see a pedestrian, some pedestrian crossing at access point at that area.
That's an excellent idea. That's an excellent suggestion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thanks for not connecting the steeplechase. You've basically done everything we've asked. I do have one concern on the storm, you're, I like how you're grabbing all the storm to the west, got some water issues there. And this east line in the staff report, it's not a condition, but it says, city engineer also requesting that the developer work with the city to provide an overflow pipe from the existing stream to the storm sewer on Johnny Cake. So, this, is this is, they're going to help with the Stony Brook. So, it looks like there's rear yard drains all along here. So, you're going to dredge out Ward Brook. So, can you put this overflow pipe that is, can we condition this to catch these rear yard drains and then go out to the public storm sewer system on the east line to alleviate any, alleviate any more water going to Stony Brook and Deepwood? Is that your, is that your plan? I'm kind of talking to the engineer back there.
Travis Coyne, civil engineer with Don Boni Associates. As far as the east property line, for the, the new 23 acres, we have rear yard storm...
I see that, but you have them coming out to the right-of-way.
Yeah, so then from the right-of-way, it goes into that retention pond. So, then we'll store the water, treat it for water quality, and then it gets released through an outlet structure into that 48. So, it's going to go in the 48 sewer. It's just going to go to our pond.
So, can you do, can you do the overflow, the overflow storm sewer on the eastbound portion of Ward Brook on that new 23-acre lot to help some of the flow heading eastbound, just like the gentleman talked about? Can you, can you get something back there a lot like what you have on the west property line? That's what I'm, that's what I'm, why have you looked into that?
I mean, we haven't. It was, I mean, we met with the city engineer. They requested in the west, just because already those two bypass sewers are already in the west property. There's already an existing easement in place there. So, we're going to tie the west bypass sewer, the, on the southwest corner of the site, into that existing bypass. And then...
Okay. So, you've looked into it?
Yeah, we've, we've, we've met several times with the...
So, you're going to take a couple feet of silt out?
Yes.
You're going to clean the, clean it up? And then, it was one other thing that I had, is that the mounding and landscaping that runs along Johnny Cake, that's got to be done first. Because this is an entryway into the city and a lot, we get a lot of visitors coming. And it would be an eyesore, because this is going to be a two- or three-year build-out. So that when people get off on I-10 and they're headed towards a mall, they don't, because, you know, I know what these look like. You know, you strip the topsoil, you know, it's, it is what it is when it's getting built. So, as a condition, I want that mounding and landscaping along Johnny Cake property line to be done right away so that, so that it looks nice, even though on the other side it won't. And then I guess, as far as the single-story lots, where the rear setbacks are minimum 30 feet to the property line, should we condition, like what you said, should we condition a single-story house and some advanced landscaping where the, where the curvature touches where you have that minimum 30-foot setback? You know, I guess, should we condition that? I mean, that's what Kathy, I was just kind of piggybacking on what Kathy was saying there.
I guess it's up to you how you want to condition it, but did you...
Well, I wanted to get, to get the three, or, so I, so first, in, in terms of the storm, storm analysis, you can see our, our analysis on the initial 50 acres is much more advanced than the 23. So, the 23 is very preliminary. So, I, I think we'll continue to demonstrate, our track record will demonstrate that we will solve every possible thing we can for the city. That was item number one. Item number two, as far as the landscaping, we want that in. I mean, we opened, we want it to look finished and complete. I would say my, my only caution would be weather. It's all weather-dependent. But if the first available opportunity, when the weather is cooperating, we will landscape that. Because when we grand-open the community, we want it fully landscaped and fully complete. So, and then with, with respect, I guess I would just, I would come back and happy to come back or come back before council and, and work with staff and propose key strategic areas where we feel the need, enhanced landscaping, we need to look at which particular houses, house plans are offered on those lots, and what we're doing to enhance that buffer and visual break. And so, we're going to be limited in terms of mounding because of the drainage, what we're trying to handle with the drainage. So, in that case, we would look at a fencing or different, different planting materials. Each one will be unique, and we'll have to actually almost study it sublot by sublot along that line.
Okay. Oh, that's, that's all I got.
Mr. Chair, just one, Larry, could you put up the phases? And going a lot, a little bit of what Mr. Vargo was talking about, getting access to that common area, it looks like that's either part of Phase Two or Phase Three. And one of the key elements of RVG is having access to common area. If we only end up with Phase One and Phase Two isn't done for five years, 10 years, the question is, do we really have RVG in Phase One alone? So, as you look at that pedestrian easement, if there's a way to get to that area, I think that would be very helpful in Phase One, so that it becomes a true RVG.
And it was an excellent suggestion. I'm glad it was brought up, and we will incorporate that into the pedestrian access.
Right.
I have a couple of questions, additional questions. And just, maybe just for the, for the, the public's sake, that the, with RVG, the developed open space, you know, you have a higher density where the buildings are built, or the houses are built, but then you have some benefit area where you don't have density, where you have some natural environment, where you have some amenities. And those things balance off, and that's the idea between, behind RVG. I have a question about the, the limited connection between, at, what's the name of that stream? Twin, Twinbrook?
Stream?
No, Deepwood, the Deepwood connection.
Oh, okay.
Has this been brought in front of the fire department and the police department? So, they're buying in on this?
Yes.
Because in the end, at the end of the day, if they don't buy in, I don't buy in. But if they're in, okay. And it's interesting that you, your comment about, is this, you know, if this, for instance, if this all went south and you only built everything north of the stream, it's not an RVG.
That's where you have to have access.
It doesn't meet the requirements. Everything in my mind to the north is in violation because it's the density, but there's no amenity. You know, there's, so, some of the phasing, when you think about phasing, I'd like to see some of the phasing include the open space development, even though you're not building houses there. And let's say, we'll make it a condition that we have this pedestrian access point that gets back there, that I'd like to see some of that developed in some fashion so that people can maybe go back and walk, you know, at least it's accessible to them. It's not going to be a construction zone. So, that might be a condition that some of the common space is accessible at the, at the point of the development of the first phase. You think that can be done?
Well, we're not able to get vehicles back there to do any construction at that point. And right now, Phase One is 65 units. If we're eliminating it initially to pedestrian traffic back there, and then you're going to have almost access to 50 open acres of pasture at that time. That's, that's a perfect solution.
Just to be, people will be able to get back there and start to enjoy some of what they've purchased on the front end that they're not going to get until the, the back of the project.
We could, it could be labeled temporary recreation area until Phase Two is under construction.
I'm not talking about building stuff, I'm just talking about being able to go back...
Yeah, just be able to have access to it.
And have access to it.
Absolutely, yeah. And if I could also address your, your point, because it's, it's a very important one, and I think it's actually one of the strengths that we bring to the table. At the height, at the height of the recession, I opened, we built the Del Webb Community on the west side in North Ridgeville, 585 units. We opened the community in 2007.
Good luck.
A year before the greatest downturn everybody has seen. We still continued to sell through the downturn and completed all 585 units. It took us a few years longer than we thought, but we still did it, and we still, there was a $6 million clubhouse in that instance that was built in the facility, extensive walking trails, very, very similar amenities to this, and we still continue to do it.
Can, there's a landscaping plan that, that will be developed.
Yes.
Will it come to us for review?
Sure, the final plan, yep.
Right. Well, then, we'd like to see these, some of these thoughts reflected in the landscaping plan. I think that might be the best place to represent this stuff, is like the additional passage of pedestrian access point, and maybe some notations or suggestions about being able to do this in the first phase.
And, yes, similar to our redesign on the cul-de-sac, we can have that to you probably within a week. We can have modified details on that within a week.
Anything else? Ready to go? I have a motion. So, I'll make the motion. I think we have nine conditions now. So, it's the seven that were there, the pedestrian walk easement to the open development during, in Phase One, and then the mounding on I-84 completed in Phase One. Is that all, or actually? Okay, that's my motion.
Second.
Can you clarify that?
Which one?
I think the mounding is pretty clear, but the, the pedestrian access, specifically what you want that to say.
Okay. We would like from Phase One, a permanent, let's see, I want to make sure, yeah, we're talking about, okay. Right. We, we would like, I would like, we would like as a condition, and I'm going to say it longer, then we'll try to cut it down. A permanent pedestrian access, you know, I'm not telling you where, but someplace along here, easement and bridge and access to the common area to this southeast of the property. But it's going to be permanent, and it should be in Phase One. Is that definitive enough as a, as a motion? But it's gonna be permanent and it should be in Phase One. Okay, is that definitive enough as a, as a motion?
Kevin? Obviously, the record's not gonna reflect your, your laser thing. Maybe just specifying that Mr. Varga was pointing, um, along the, along the easterly edge of the development site.
Let's, let's say, starting seventy-nine would be the first opportunity lot.
To seventy-four.
And about seventy-four. In that area, to create an easement, that would be pedestrian, that would lead to a crossing of the stream, that would lead, allow a pedestrian, and you have some pedestrian routes in there already, once you get across the stream.
It will.
So you just link into that. And, but it should be developed as a pedestrian thing in Phase One.
Can I suggest, if you wanna limit it to seventy-four, I mean, you could go down to seventy, because there's a nice gap there between the two.
Seventy. By that point, you're already getting close to the bridge. I was trying to make it, you know, trying, trying to get it at the east end of the property. You, the, the people on this end, the west could cross where the bridge is. So it's kind of the, get it on the other end of the property, so. Okay?
Excellent.
Good with everybody?
I mean, I think, I think eighty, between eighty and seventy-nine is the, is the slot to get it.
Mr. Cook, are you happy with the landscaping?
I'm happy.
So there's nine, nine conditions.
Maybe one other suggestion that we were just discussing, there shall be no, uh, construction, um, traffic through Deepwood.
Okay, that'll be the tenth condition.
Which would be trespassing.
Yes. But, let's state the obvious.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item nine on the new business, preliminary site plan of a commercial building, car wash.
Go again.
So we're talking about a car wash building now?
Yes.
You can start anytime you want to.
Sure, it's gonna, it's our, our other washes, or three of the other washes have a faux rock wall in the front of it, which I think is staff's main concern. Um, the rest of the building would be brick, um, meant type of, uh, structure. We have a couple of pay stations that would have some canopy over them. And then we have the vacuums, um, which basically is a underground central vac system.
Where would I see this building now?
Uh, I don't think we, that's one of our other washes. It doesn't need to look, we have better looking ones than that now.
So where does that exist?
That one is in Brunswick. Um, I have some other pictures of a new one, where like a ground up that we're gonna be building in Avon. I could show it, can you guys project, if I can?
Andy, oh, thank you.
So, there are a couple.
You know, you put, right there, right there. Take a look at the screen as you do it. Yeah.
So this is one that we're.
Just in the process, starting construction on an Avon. Um, it's just a, a block building. Um, we have the overhang glass office area, so that's where the employees would meet customers and where they can come out and greet customers at the pay stations if they need assistance. And that's really the entrance of the area. Is it just kind of a side view of it? We tried to give it a little bit of architecture on the side with different colored and textured bricks, basically. Then, this is the exit to the tunnel. Where we, we have this, uh, it'll be a faux rock wall. The gentleman that does it actually is the guy that did the Disney Tree of Life. So their, our first one we had in Brunswick wasn't nearly the, um, real life structure that they are now.
I can see the city's concern.
Yes, I understand. Um, if, if, if we can't do something to this extent, uh, something with regular stone to make it seem different than, you know, I guess just a traditional, uh, box storefront.
Okay.
Let me take a shot.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the folks around here probably don't wanna theme park, uh, themed, you know, type building like that. So you might think about, let's think about the, the previous building we looked at as something that would be more regular, uh, in this area. One of the sensitivities that the city has, and that I know that if we let you put up a block building, that we'd all get calls immediately from all the councilmen saying, how dare you let them put up a block building in the, in the city? So brick is the material of, of choice.
Yes.
In the city. Adjacent buildings to this area also have brick. So I think, you need to think brick. You can be, you can make it contemporary, it could be looking as a contemporary building, like more glass in the front or whatever. But I think it's gonna have to not be block on the outside. I think I can speak strongly along those lines. So that would almost mean that we'd have to look at a different presentation. You know, that, that this is not gonna cut it for that. Um, that's my opinion, I'll, I'll let other people have theirs. The use of the glass block, that's probably fine, you know, I mean, how you integrate that, how you, what you do with the brick materials. But brick versus block, we wanna see brick. The other sensitivity that I have is that when you look at this from the south side, that's where the roof slopes down. Is there any mechanical equipment on this roof at all?
No.
None?
Everything inside.
Everything is inside. So there's no, no box at the end, no big exhaust fan, no, something is gonna show up there. Because, my point is being, we do not like to see that. We wanna see anything on the roof screened. So that might be cause the walls to come up to create more of a parapet look. So I didn't know if there was any equipment, but that has to be strongly considered, or it'll be a problem. So my statement is, it needs to be brick. You can do different colors of brick, you can do some patterns, you can do whatever you would like to present. And, and it could be a combination of brick and some decorative block. But, but just scored split face block is not gonna work.
Would stone be acceptable, some type of like backstone?
Stone would be acceptable depending on how it's used, what it looks like and how it's used. Is your wall just eight inches thick wall? Is it just an eight inch wall? Or is it, uh, eight inches plus of exterior material?
Eight inches, yes.
So you're gonna have to achieve this either by having an eight and four, or a six and, and eight, a six and four, you know, six block brick or something. But, but we're probably not gonna wanna see the standard concrete block expressed on the outside of the building.
So what we're talking about here is the footprint. So we can go ahead with the footprint and leave the architectural treatment till the final.
Yes.
Okay. Let's go back to that, then.
Just before we get to the footprint, just one other comment on the architectural treatment. I'd like to see something in between the two pictures you showed. Not as extreme as climbing rock walls, but also not just a brick building that's gray. Something, somewhere in the middle.
Okay, that sounds fair.
Andy, could you switch back?
I gotta ask a question. What is a themed haunted car washes, what, in a winter wonderland?
So we did a haunted wash at our car wash in Brunswick just this year for the first time, and it drew a lot of attention. So it was on Good Morning America and CNN and everybody picked it up kind of around the country. So it went viral and we had a lot of cars and people coming from.
So you have some people dressed up in costumes out front. But nothing different with the car wash?
Car wash was same. It was after hours, um, went till, I think, eleven o'clock at night and lights were off in the wash.
Strobe lights and stuff like that.
It was pretty neat.
One other comment, uh, you have a landscaping plan that's kind of minimal. You do have, it do looks, it do, it does look like you're putting what we call foundation plantings around the base of the building. You show some trees, I don't know where, I can't find it. Okay, thank you. You've got some trees kinda miscellaneously plotted, you know, there, there is the tree that just, you know, this, this tree, this tree, the other. Might think about kind of getting a, a more conceptual landscaping plan, other than just floating a tree. Maybe some planting beds, maybe, maybe some mounding or something, I don't know. But right now, it's, it's, it's looks like the absolute minimum, and I think we'd like to see a little more in the way of the planning. And, and I still, going back to the city, I still would concern myself with, at what point does that become a private drive? Oh, no, it's all private drive, no, that's right, I've never the answer. Yeah, I was still, still, the question was still floating around, and I got the answer. So that's fine, that's all I got.
So what we're now doing is we're approving, if, if we get five affirmative votes, we're approving a, uh, concept plan for the preliminary.
But not the architecture.
But not the architecture, because that comes at the final. So I'll maintain a motion.
Oh, what do we got? How many conditions?
Eight. Motion to approve with the eight conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
So Lainey's review of a donation bin, ninety-six hundred Minter Avenue. Here, your bag.
I have a memorable face, huh? Do we even need this, there's no one in here? This microphone? So, my name is George Grossos, I represent Ohio Mills, in case you don't remember from last time. And we're seeking permission, um, to place a donation bin. Oh, see, I don't recognize that. This is for Lowe's, but it would be near that island or divider between Dunkin' Donuts and that, that parking lot right there. So yeah, right there, okay. Sorry, it just looks different from my site plan. But yeah, it would be right there. And, um, we, we would commit to all the conditions. It would be fenced in, the signing would be on the outside. I think there were five or six conditions. And, um, I think you have a picture of what the bin looks like from last time. It's, it is gonna be enclosed anyway. Um, do you want me to put this over here? Can see it?
While he's doing that, if I could just call out, uh, the recommended condition number one.
Right, which is?
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, completely different.
I'm sorry?
Well, I, I don't think we have a problem with what the bin looks like or anything. But I think the first condition that the city has brought up is the, is the bone, is the first issue to tackle, which is, they don't want it there. They want it behind the face of the building, the, the plane of the building, which would mean not, not here, but someplace here, back here, over here, or. They're looking at, they're, they're suggesting it not be a floater out in the middle of the parking lot all by itself, but that it's behind the face of the building.
Yeah, that was, okay, uh, so I don't know who the general manager spoke with, but I thought he had spoken with somebody from the city and it was moved from the original island. There was an island that's near that oil change, I don't know if it's a Valvoline or an instant oil change. That's where it was originally. So from my, my understanding, uh, this would be, um, this is already moved. I don't know whose condition that was.
Well, it's, it's not moved to the right spot.
It's not moved to the right spot. Okay, then can I, is it possible for me to see that view of Lowe's, the actual, not on the site plan? So what are we, what are we saying then, where specifically?
So basically, the front building line, we want it behind the front building line. We want it to the side and then interior side, not along the public right of way. So where they have their, basically right there, where they have their, um, garden center adjacent to that would be fine, if it's properly screened.
Okay.
The idea is, is that we don't want them along the, the public right of way.
Okay.
So we're talking about right here?
Yep.
Right there, pat beyond the wall, right along there.
And this is like the east side of the building?
East side, that's the very.
East side of the building?
The building is over here and this is the very east end of the, the land, of the, uh,
Garden.
Garden center storage wall.
Okay, all right, I mean, we'll, we'll agree to that. If there's an issue with, um, either Lowe's or the, um, or the property owner, then we just won't put it in. But we won't put it somewhere where you won't approve it. You know, I mean, because we, I mean, beggars can't be choosers, I mean, we're just trying to get donations, so, you know, they're not getting anything out of it, they're just trying to help the Special Olympics. So if that doesn't work for them, we just won't do it. But, but we agree, but, you know, we, I can agree that if it doesn't go there, then we just won't put it on the property.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what else I can say about it. I, I didn't know, again, I thought the condition of moving it was near the Dunkin' Donuts, I apologize.
That's right. So do we need to take any action? What action do we take? We approve the new location as part of the condition.
First condition.
First condition, so we just, we just vote on the conditions that are there? Okay. So, overall.
It needs to be on the east side of the garden center.
On the east side of the garden center, yeah.
It's the first condition, there is a condition there already.
So we're amending the first condition to say on the east side of the garden center.
That's right, yeah, that's how many, how many conditions we have?
Five.
Okay, make a motion, five, the five conditions for approval.
Second.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yeah.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I promise not to come up here again until that whole, that whole, um, development is completed. For my sake.
So Lainey's review to amend the approved development plan.
Thank you.
Alan Lilly with GBC Design, here to present for Chick-fil-A. They are looking at removing some parking spaces out here in order to install a multi-lane drive-through.
So they're going to double drive-through?
Yep, two order stations, two drive-through lanes. It will have a canopy over both the order stations, and it will actually have a canopy over the pickup window as well alongside of the building. That all helps in assisting the customers, or I'm sorry, the employees get the orders and provide the orders to the customers, and which helps the queuing lane go through a little quicker and more efficiently. Have any questions?
I have a request. I'm sure this is all worked out and, you know, the plan looks like it'll still work and that's fine. With canopies in this town, and if you look around, and I drove around today thinking about this too, and everything, every, like gas station canopy that's been built in the last four or five years, the columns are cladded with brick.
Okay, all the way up or just part way up?
All the way up.
All the way up, okay.
So I would suggest the plan is fine, but I would like all the, except for the, the, you have a, you have one standalone that is really a height.
Yeah, the clearance bar?
You don't have to worry, I wouldn't want, that would look strange if that was covered.
Okay.
But I'd like all the rest of the, the columns, pipe columns, to be cladded in brick to match the building.
Is that a motion?
Well, that's, that's a condition, I don't know if, if anybody else.
I think that is consistent with what we've been asking.
That's right, that's very consistent. And that's why I wanted to make the point that if you drive around, you look at every gas station canopy, we've, we've requested that they clad all of them with bricks. So that would be a third. So that would be a third condition. So I would make the, the motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
Now we're going to go back to Mr. Horton.
Oh, he's here.
Item six. Maintain the motion. Remove it from the table.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Once again, my apologies for being late, and thank you for your flexibility in hearing this case, this evening.
Right ahead.
I think that we're here to discuss the color selections that were made to recote the building. And so I think that perhaps I should turn to Kathy to embellish on the process we went through. Could that be, you go?
Right ahead.
So Mr. Horton came in last week and sat down with myself and John McFarland, and we basically took a look at the color swatches that Mr. Horton brought in. And we, I guess, and I guess in doing some of, some of the research in, in the basement, if you will, Larry came across a brick that we believe is probably the closest brick to match what was there originally. So working off of that piece of brick, we came up with the color selections that are presented. And as always, when you print, you know, you lose a little bit. So if you wanted to see those colors, we've got them selected. You know, obviously, it looks like some of them have a little bit of a pink tone, and I know when you drive by, there's a little bit of a gold tone, so it's tough. But I think there's less pink than what you're seeing up on the, on the screen, but that's why we brought the, the palettes, if you wanted to, to look at those. And there. But Mr. Horton didn't have a specific preference. He's just waiting for you guys to make a suggestion.
Well, I did have a preference. Excuse me, and that's, that's the color I painted it, just for the record.
We understand.
But I...
For the record.
Yes, for the record.
Favorite is over here.
That's right. Thank you.
I, I feel everyone's looking at me, so...
You want this?
Can you, can you point on there? You know, just bring it over for a second. I mean, I can tell you right off the bat, my first feeling is the middle one, but that's... And which one are we talking about?
Which believe it was?
And this is the middle shade, right?
Oak barrel.
Is that the middle one?
That's.
That's the middle one? Okay, these both look darker than...
Yeah.
Okay, just the way it comes out.
Man of the Moon nineteen sixty-nine.
To be honest, if we, if we actually think this is the color, that this, this one actually is the closest.
Which one?
What is that? Can you read it?
Red and, red and white, the bottom one.
It's the bottom one. So that's it? That's right. I mean, you know, you guys are welcome to have an opinion, but that's the closest, this is the closest match to that.
Is there a cobalt blue in there?
So is that, can we use, is that a decision? Right, here, here's the color, here's the brick, here's the color.
Again, I'll, I'll say the same thing I said before. We're, you know, we're in Old Village. It looks just like Center Street School. I like, out of the four, I like...
The original.
I like the one that's on it right now the best, yeah. So, you know, being in, being in the Old Village, you see the old brick. I mean, I know you did it without, you've been apologetic about it, but... I'm on board with you with thinking that. I, I actually like the color of it. It looks like old brick, like old brick buildings. The, the facility looks nice. It's well cap.
So Kathy, what's your feeling?
Oh, gosh.
No, I mean, the only reason there is before us is because we caught him changing the color.
Yeah, and it, it wasn't part of the original development plan, right.
And it's different than the original.
Right.
I, I take all that in, but I still think...
Well, unfortunately, I wasn't at the meeting where this came forward, but I do agree with Mr. Cook. I feel that color, it just looks like the other buildings in the area, the current color.
The color's grown on me, so I'm okay with it now.
So are we saying, leave it alone? Is that what we're saying?
Got a vote on it, right?
Be a motion to approve, what is it? Can't read it. Copper, copper red?
The current color or...
Just so that the record be, be clear, the samples are available now, so if some future owner, you know, may, may unilaterally change it again, it'll be a good record of what the color was.
Motion to approve with Royal Croft Copper Red.
Roy Croft.
Roy Croft.
Roy Croft. Roy Croft.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
So you're in business.
Don't have to do anything.
Thank you so much. I, I'm...
Sleep to sleep with the Jess tonight.
Director's report.
Okay, so you have before you Enterprise Rent-A-Car. They've been slowly moving along with this project, and...
Emphasis on slowly.
Emphasis on slow, not as slow as discount tire.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're absolutely correct.
And they came across working on the fence, and some of the fence is, is already constructed. And if you recall, and we did have a discussion on this, I was trying my darndest to find an actual record of emails or anything. I think, I believe it was just verbal, but I can even recall in our discussion at the Planning Commission, when you guys, I'm sorry, when the, when the Planning Commission, it's getting late, when the Planning Commission approved the plan on March twenty-eighth, the final plan, the location of the fence was on the interior of the lot, on the ins, on the inside of the buffer, if I'm saying that right. So, yeah, except for the east side. The, of the, the fence was always proposed on the east, on the east side of the lot to be right on the property line. But on the north and on the west sides of the lot, it was proposed to be located on the interior of the lot. And at the time, I believe it was to save on cost of the fence.
Yes, less, less linear feet.
Right. But as they've, as they've moved forward, and they, they came across the existing fence, which was, which was pretty in poor condition, they removed it. It was on the property line itself, and they asked, you know, were there any restrictions on putting it on the line? And they would like to put it on the line. So my director's report outlines the fact that, you know, obviously, this is, this is different from what you approved, but when you look at, what are the true requirements of the code for the buffer requirements? There's a buffer requirement for a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer with an eight-foot solid fence. There's no indication of where that solid, that foot fence has to go. And so, and in our fence regulations, there is no objection to a fence going right on the property line. So he's asking that the north and west property lines be allowed to, you know, maintain that fence on the property line, as was the original, the existing fence, which has just, has since been removed. I have personally had no objection to it, but I wanted to share this with you because it was, you know, different from what you had seen. And again, from, from the standpoint is, is it's not in violation of the code. It didn't seem like it was an unreasonable request.
Can I, can I ask a question? It would seem counterproductive. How tall is the fence? Six foot?
Eight foot.
Eight-foot fence. It would seem counterproductive to put up an eight-foot fence and then require them to plant twenty feet of bushes that nobody sees. Nobody can see it because there's an eight-foot fence blocking your view of this landscape buffer.
People on the adjacent property will see it.
Well, they'll, they'll see a fence. They won't see the twenty, you know, the twenty feet of landscaping.
Conversely, when you put up a fence and then you put the landscaping behind it...
How do you maintain the landscape? Yes, exactly. So, I mean, what, what that's actually pointing out is, you know, confusion in the regulations.
Yeah, it's one or the other, or why both, maybe?
One or the other, but why both, right?
And if anything...
If we say, go ahead, put the fence up on the property line, you still have to keep, you can't do any construction, you can't build anything in that twenty feet. But to do extensive landscaping that no one sees, that seems...
Well, it certainly enhances the look of the lot.
Other than the people going at it.
From in the lot, yeah.
That's right.
Right, well, okay. I mean, I'm not, I'm just trying to talk it through right now, because at first it seemed like this made no sense at all.
It didn't, and honestly, and I can recall, and I don't know who specifically who it was, it was, that was the question that came up when we first reviewed it, is why are we putting a fence and then the landscaping behind it? It's going to get ignored, and then how's it going to be maintained? And, you know, that is a legitimate concern, but your, your point is taken as well. So I guess I just wanted to bring this to your attention and just get, you know, get, get that, get that feedback. If you had a real concern with it, I'll have them formally bring it back, but again, I didn't see that it was in violation of the code.
And it, and if they had a current fence, essentially, they're just replacing the current fence. Would you need to go to planning to replace a dilapidated fence? You just get a permit, right?
You just get a permit.
So we don't want fence, landscaping, fence?
Well, and that was his point too, right?
Because I think the fence is up now. Most of it is, yeah.
So you want a motion?
Well, I mean...
Is that what you, is that what you made?
I guess, are you comfortable with this, with this change, or do you want him to formally come back and discuss it?
I don't think he needs to formally come back.
Okay.
No. But it does, it still seems confusing to me that we've got twenty feet of relatively intensive landscaping, that no one... I mean, the landscaping is meant to be a buffer, right?
Sure.
I mean, that's the idea. But it's not visible from the people that's being buffered from, so why put it in? On the other hand, you know, he could put a couple of trees in, you know, it could make it look attractive, but he wouldn't have to put in all this landscaping for no purpose whatsoever. I'm just looking for, I mean, you know, what...
I, I see it both ways. When you look at how this lays out on the lot and what this business is, there's not a whole lot there. So the idea of having all this landscaping makes the piece of land look better.
Coming down twenty, you look over, you're not going to see this.
You're going to see a bunch of parked cars with a fence.
Well, there's actually a building in front of this. You don't even see that from twenty. But yeah, okay, I mean, I...
If that's what he's okay with doing, do it.
Yeah, let it go. But I think, I think maybe you might want to go back and review the requirements to make, make it, make more sense.
Anything else, Kathy?
Not for tonight.
Right. Maintain the motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Make the motion.
Second.